Good evening and welcome to the Ogden City Council meeting for April 2, 2013. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Chair Blair and Councilmember Gockner who have both asked to be excused tonight. And also, from the council staff, Bill Cook is asked to be excused tonight. And we have an opportunity for a pledge of allegiance to be done by one of our troops. We have Troop 218 and Scout Carter Meacham will come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Carter, if you'll just come up here, we'll get your friend up here with you too. We'll just have you talking to the mic and tell us. Go on the other side. Go on the other side. There you go.
I'm Carter Meacham. We are here working on our citizenship in the community merit badge.
Go ahead, tell me your name and...
My name is Spencer Allen. I'm working on the same merit badge as him.
Thanks for being here, guys, and thanks for your leaders for bringing you. Thank you. And now we will have a moment of silence. And thank you, boys. First on the agenda is an item of recognition with Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I'll turn the time over to Councilmember Wicks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Garner. We have Trina Taylor with Prevent Child Abuse Utah here. She was working at the Child Abuse Prevention Center over 15 years ago when I first started working there, so it shows the dedication of people to this cause in the community. But this is a joint proclamation of the Ogden City Council and Mayor, and it is declaring April 2013 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Ogden City, and it reads as follows. Whereas although all children deserve to experience and enjoy a carefree and innocent childhood, child abuse is a serious and growing problem affecting more than 11,500 of Utah's children annually. And whereas child abuse respects no racial, religious, class, or geographic boundaries, domestic violence-related child abuse continues to be the most prevalent form of child abuse in Utah, and the incidence of sexual abuse follows as the second most common form of abuse. And whereas a child is abused or neglected every 38 minutes in the state of Utah. Last year, there were 737 supported cases of child abuse resulting in 1,174 victims of child abuse in Weber County alone. And whereas statistics show threats to Utah's children and families cross over several program lines resulting in further costs for the state, 31 percent of the children in custody of the Division of Child and Family Services are there because of substance abuse by a caregiver. And whereas preventing child abuse depends upon the efforts of Utah residents to make a positive substantial impact on the children of today who will become the leaders of tomorrow. And whereas all Ogden City residents are encouraged to become more aware of child abuse within their respective communities, learn how to prevent it, and actively encourage and support parents to raise their children in a safe nurturing environment. And whereas Ogden City encourages businesses and individuals to support Prevent Child Abuse Utah in their important mission to prevent child abuse throughout the state. Now therefore, the Ogden City Council and Mayor Michael P. Caldwell do hereby proclaim April 2013 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Ogden. We encourage all people to join Prevent Child Abuse Utah in becoming advocates for children to create a society where child abuse is not tolerated. We ask everyone to actively foster a caring community which will protect our children and end child abuse and neglect. So with that, I would make a motion that we approve this joint proclamation.
I'll second it. We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Hayer to adopt this joint proclamation. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This passes. And Trina, at this time, if you'll come up, we'll present you with this proclamation.
On behalf of Prevent Child Abuse Utah, I just want to take a moment and thank the council for all the work that you do in our community. Ogden is my home, and Prevent Child Abuse Utah has two different offices, one here in Ogden and one in Salt Lake. We do the majority of our administrative work here in Ogden, so all of our in-home services are out of Ogden, and a lot of our school-based programs are here in Ogden, and we truly have refocused towards prevention. True primary prevention is stopping hurt before it begins, and that is our goal, is to have a grassroots effort at true primary prevention, stopping the hurt before it begins and helping families learn the skills that they need to be able to keep their kids with them, keep them together, learn everything that they... all those tools that it takes to be an effective parent. Parenting is a really tough job. All of us know that because so many of us have done it, and it doesn't matter how educated we are. It's a tough job. As you've seen throughout the last just couple days, you've seen Pinwheel Gardens popping up. This is our Pinwheels for Prevention campaign. This is a national campaign that is taking place in all different states, and our goal this year is to distribute 75,000 pinwheels throughout the state of Utah alone and to reach every county. We've reached every county so far, but we have a lot of pinwheels to still put up. So if you are interested in having pinwheels, and I'm talking to everybody in the room, in your home, your church, your business, any kind of agency, we want to be able to give you those pinwheels. They are free of charge. We are happy to accept donations, happy to do that, but they're free of charge. You can get on our website, it's preventchildabuseutah.org, and just request those pinwheels. You can pick them up in Ogden or in Salt Lake, and we're also happy to talk about getting them distributed to different parts of the state for just $20 a box. There's 192 in a box, and there's no magical number to that. The reason we do a pinwheel is it's the symbol of a happy childhood. Instead of bringing something sad that represents sad numbers, we want to talk about what is positive, the wonderful things that we can do to help children have that childhood that every child deserves, and that's why we use pinwheels. So thank you very much again for having us here and for this proclamation.
Thank you, Trina. Next is a request to be on the agenda from the Ogden Arts Committee, and it's the presentation of the 2012 Annual Report. And Carolyn Briarly.
Chair, this is kind of her swan song annual report she won't be introducing in our next annual report, so...
I won't.
We're counting her last down between now and October.
Everything I do now, I check it off the list, and that was my last one, and that was my last one, so end of September I'll be retiring, and you'll all be invited to the party. Ogden City Arts is an advisory committee to the mayor and the city council, and several years ago, the city determined that it would be more feasible to contract that out. The arts contract is held by Downtown Ogden, Inc. Ginny Stout is the arts director for Downtown Ogden, and as such, she manages the advisory committee for the city. So I'd like to introduce Ginny. Thank you.
And thank you to the city council for having us here this evening to talk to you about what we've done in the arts in the last year. Thank you, Mark, and all the city administration. I'd like to introduce you to some of the hardest-working committee members that I know. Each of them is very busy with their own careers, and yet they all find the time to donate to the arts in Ogden. And so I would like to have them stand as I read their names. First, I would like to introduce you to Kate Bruce, who is the chair of Ogden City Arts, and I'll have her join me at the podium as we're going to present this together. And then I would like to introduce you to... and she's the theater chair. Brandy Bosworth is our vice chair. Richard Scott is our past chair. Debra Muller. Melissa Jones Bamfo. Brian Smith. Sheila Faverro. Donna Loderhose. Kent Jorgensen. Dan Van Zeven. Wes Whitby. Dan Musgrave is our Downtown Ogden, Inc. leader, the executive director of Downtown Ogden, Inc. Sadie Barrigan is the project assistant for Downtown Ogden, Inc. Carolyn Briarly is our city liaison, and Sherry Farren and Marie Haney are outgoing committee members, and we're going to miss them terribly. They've made a great contribution to the arts, so thank you to them. You may be seated now. Thank you. World artist Lily Yay said, "Art is not what I do, it is who I am." This belief was borne out by glass artist Gaywin Quants that creates the art glass that is awarded to our Mayor's Awards and the Arts Honorees each year. Without telling event organizers, Gaywin was carving out time between rounds of chemotherapy to work on our awards. Glassblowing is a grueling, exhausting process, but Gaywin saw the deeper truth. When asked about it, she said, "I can think of no better therapy than to create objects of art that honor those that work so hard to create a better community through the arts. The honor is all mine."
This year, the Mayor's Awards in the Arts reception was held in the grand lobby of Ogden's Historic Union Station. Food and drinks were sponsored in part by the Restaurants of Historic 25th Street. The program included performances by the Ogden Chamber Orchestra, Michael Palumbo, director, and the Underground Dance Company, Autumn Hernandez-Roberts, director. Displays were created by the Ogden City Arts Committee members, and floral design was created by honoree Jeremy Trentleman. Oh, it's me again. Pictured in the 2012 Mayor's Awards in the Art Honorees, which are from left, Kay Evans, folk art; Dr. Judith Mitchell, lifetime contribution to the arts; Doug Braithwaite, visual art; Brian Smith, media art; Ginny Stout, art director; Mayor Mike Caldwell; Jeremy Trentleman, design art; Diane Neri Stern, art advocacy; Joe Packham, literary art; and Colleen Nichols for music. Each honoree received the personal thanks of Mayor Caldwell for their contribution to our community through their work in the arts. This marked the 12th annual Mayor's Award in the Arts program, and to date, 92 very deserving artists, advocates, and organizations have been recognized and have invited others to join them in their worthy pursuits.
It works. On the Arts Regranting Program, 2012 saw the largest number of applicants to date. Eighteen organizations applied for grants in the areas of general support, project support, and developmental support. The Arts Committee recommended funding 14 of the 18 applying organizations. Developmental grants were awarded to emerging organizations, the Ogden Chamber Orchestra and Good Company Theater, both of which have already made a huge splash in the arts canvas of Ogden, grant amounts where all organizations are included in your individual packets.
The Present for Art program, 2012 also saw the installation of three inspiring works of public art created from the Present for Art ordinance. The Ogden City Arts Committee recommended the acquisition of Ogden native Johnny Hartman's work, Glide, Soar, Fly, originally created for Salt Lake's Flying Objects exhibit. The work has inspired the new concept of a collection of elevated art, an oil painting titled Emergence by Doug Braithwaite and Andy Dufford's Water Cycle. The Art and Flow Dedication Event for Water Cycle took place in early spring of 2012. The event featured interactive art, craft, and water stewardship activities, like music by artist Mindy Gladhill, comments from Downtown Ogden, Inc.'s Dan Musgrave, artist Andy Dufford, Mayor Mike Caldwell, and Senator Stuart Reed. The ceremonial ribbon cutting was cut by Mayor Caldwell and Andy Dufford. Art and Flow took the place of 2012's Art on the Town. Grantees were invited to share their art disciplines with the public through interactive
The beginning of the Water Cycle is represented by a metal solstice sculpture of a flock of birds circling above the plaza. The sculpture is designed and oriented so that on the winter solstice, the shadow cast by the birds resolves into a giant snowflake, falling on a stone slab etched with a map of the local watershed on the north edge of the plaza. The snowflake shadow symbolizes the origin of the region's water and the snows of the surrounding mountains. In the summer, children can turn a crank to pump water out of the base of the sculpture. The water pours onto a stepped stone water table carved with river currents, native plants, aquatic invertebrates, fish, and birds. As children play with the water flowing around the plant and animal forms, they learn that water gives life to the many species that form the regional web of nature.
A semicircle of handcrafted stone seats complements the sculptural elements, offering a place to relax and socialize. The bench adjacent to the solstice mapstone bears the quote, "All the water that will ever be is," prompting visitors to think about the water cycle and reminding them that water is a finite resource requiring careful stewardship by all. An event was held on December 21 to witness the first solstice at Water Cycle, and Ogden native Jane Bruce, my daughter, wrote and performed a special song to mark the occasion. It was a beautiful day. If anyone that wasn't there, it was just perfect. It was wonderful.
It was striking. And just as Jane finished her song and the sculpture lined up perfectly, a bald eagle honestly rose from the trees near the river and soared up over the gathering. So if that's not a sign that we had done a good thing, I don't know what is. The Ogden City Arts Committee joined other civic groups in Ogden's Make a Difference Day, lending a fresh coat of paint to the bridge at the intersection of Grant Avenue and the Ogden River, just in time for the Ogden Marathon and the Water Cycle dedication
The Governor's Award in the Arts for 2012. Due in no small part to the hard work of the organizations listed above and many more, the city of Ogden was honored with the Governor's Award in the Arts in the area of community leadership in the arts at the Mountain West Conference in the arts in May of 2012. Ogden City Arts would like to join city administration and the city council in congratulating all organizations, artists, educators, and advocates that made this award possible and that made Ogden a great place to... makes Ogden a great place to live, work, and create.
Ogden's First Friday Art Stroll is arguably one of the most exciting, organic, and ever-changing art strolls around. Over a dozen venues participate on a regular basis through exhibits, artist meet-and-greets, interactive art activities, and performing arts offerings. Never the same thing twice, on each first Friday evening of the year, you will find different art experiences, added pop-up galleries, and friends along the stroll, all bearing out the fact that art happens here.
Projects accomplished by the Ogden City Art Committee wouldn't be possible without the generous support of organizations such as Ogden City, Downtown Ogden, Inc., Ogden Amphitheater, Rocky Mountain Power, Ramp, the Sundance Film Institute, the Union Station Foundation, Only in Ogden, Jeff Faverro Photography, and the countless volunteer hours of not only committee members, but family members and friends of the Ogden Arts Committee and many,
From its cultural and arts festivals to impromptu street performances outside the galleries of the Ogden's First Friday Art Stroll, art is happening all around us, and area citizens and visitors are defining the cultural character of this time. The face of the arts within this community is constantly evolving. This fact is evidenced through its many gallery exhibits, literary offerings, innumerable scheduled and impromptu live art performances, a growing collection of public art, and a variety of cultural film and arts festivals and markets. Opportunities abound to become part of the new and creative cultural fabric. Take a class, attend a performance, stop into a gallery or several along the First Friday Art Stroll, join your neighbors at a festival or farmers' and art market. In Ogden, we're proud to say that you can find them at every turn. Enjoy your journey. I hope you are inspired, delighted, and challenged along the way. That is our presentation of the Ogden City Arts Committee's Business of 2012, and we would entertain any questions that you might have.
Do we involve the local artists also in your program?
Absolutely. They're invited to participate on many levels. We could go through each of the programs that I've listed, and they are invited. We have a very active website and Facebook fan page, and they are invited to... in fact, we have a call to artists right now for the airport expansion project, and it is our hope and aim that that will be a local artist that is chosen for that installation. And I believe that their responses are due in a week. It went out about two weeks ago. It's due in two weeks. It went out a week ago, excuse me. And so they've been given all of the information that they need to respond to that request for proposals. The First Friday Art Stroll is also an excellent, excellent opportunity for local artists to participate. We get requests from venues that aren't necessarily specific art galleries on a regular basis to participate, and we give them ideas of where to find artists that are looking to participate, whether they are established artists or emerging artists. We also invite performing artists to participate in the First Friday Art Stroll and at other performances. We have a great reception after a chosen Sundance film, and we choose a local artist or two to participate in that reception. And even, yeah, and even include high school children, high school youth in that performance. So there are many, many opportunities, and we are constantly outreach to find artists that maybe don't even consider themselves artists or call themselves artists or make a living at being artists, because we believe that each of us can create and can live a creative life.
I know the arts add a vital element to our community, and we can walk through our community or our city and see your efforts and your... what talents you bring to our community, and we all share in that aspect, and we thank you for that.
Thank you. That's a very appropriate comment coming from you, as I know that you have participated in many visual arts competitions and done very well in those. So for those of you that don't know, Councilwoman Stevens participates in competitions, and I see all of you at the Farmers and Art Market and many other events, so I appreciate not only your support behind the bench, but out in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I just would love to add, it is thank you all, and thank you to the mayor for all that you do for the arts. It truly is an honor to be a part of this committee, so thank you very much.
And great work. Thank you. And Carolyn, thank you for your years of service, and you'll be greatly missed, but you have made a difference, so thank you. Next on the agenda is three items of common consent.
We need to accept. So I would make a motion that we accept the 2012 Annual Report from the Ogden Arts Committee.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier to accept the Ogden Arts Committee Annual Report. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you. Good job. Next are three items of common consent: the Ogden City Arts Committee reappointments, the Convention and Visitor Bureau marketing plan, and the Good Ski Lake Connector Trail
If there's no further discussion, I would make a motion that we accept common consent items A, B, and C.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier to accept common consent items A, B, and C. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, are these set up for April 16 then of this year?
Yeah. The Arts Committee is reappointment of... and if these guys are here, if they'll just stand so we can recognize them, Melissa Jones Bamfo and Deja Mitchell, Katie Lee, Teri Zanger, and Michael Palumbo.
I continue to think that we're very thrilled that each of you have...
commitments. Well, we're glad that they're... we're glad. So they'll be joining you, so thank you. And then for Councilmember Stevens, yes, this is setting the public hearing for April 16, 2013. Thank you. Next is reports from administration. Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Ward Ogden will take care of the first item, A. The asset, the loan renewal. And in case you care, Weber State is ahead 26-20.
Thank you.
Is that common consent?
Vote, we win.
Members of the council, the item before you now is a renewal of a line of credit that the city has had with GE Money Bank for the past two years. We've used this money to fund acquisition and renovation of homes under our asset control program and the construction of new homes that you have seen on tours that we have done. It's a two-year line of credit, and now that it is expiring, GE has offered to renew that line of credit for us so that we can continue to operate our asset control area program, the other purchase and rehab programs, homes that we do, and the other infill housing, new construction that we do. The terms are the same. We're proposing that we expand the... increase the amount of the loan in order to provide more funds for expanding our operation, so we'd like to do more. We think that by investing some of the funds that we currently have in our infill line of budget line item, investing it as security for this loan, that we can expand that fourfold and get more money to do more projects. So we're looking at expanding our operation this coming year and hoping to get a little bit more money, and GE is agreeable to that and has offered to give us the same terms that we've had over the past two years, which are very good. that we've had over the past two years, which are very good. It's a LIBOR, 90-day LIBOR plus 150 basis points, so we've been paying, on average, around 2% interest on the loan. So it's a very good rate, and GE is a very good partner to work with. So what we're recommending is that we renew our line of credit and continue to invest the $250,000 that we've had in the guarantee account, and then put another $100,000 into that account from money that we currently have in our line item for infill housing. Are there any questions?
I have a question. On the projects that you do, how do they come to you? How do you decide what you're going to do and what you're not going to do?
With the asset control program, those are HUD homes. They're foreclosed homes that HUD eventually gets through paying the banks the insurance settlement, and so they're HUD homes. And we have an agreement with HUD that within the asset control area, which is essentially Monroe to Harrison with some divergence, but it's in the east-central neighborhood, we take all of those homes. So we don't really get to pick which homes we take in the asset control.
They come up, you take them.
Yes, we... that's our agreement. They give us some good ones and some bad ones, and we have to take all of them. The infill, we've talked over the past few years about site selection for infill, and it's traditionally been the east-central neighborhood, trying to take advantage of opportunities there with vacant lots and some others rarely, but there are times when homes have outlived their usefulness, and we've taken down some homes. And of course, as you know, we're taking on a new, larger project at 23rd Street, between 23rd and 24th, around the Quincy area, to undertake that and hope to be able to undertake more in the future.
HUD the only organization you work with, or are there others?
No, not necessarily. There are banks that have foreclosed homes that are looking for buyers, and we have a preferred status with some entities that deal with banks. We also look for opportunities that are in the east-central area that are kind of strategic in neighborhoods that need help, that we think that by doing a home or two here and there, we can affect a big change in the neighborhood. And a good example of that is the 2500 block of Quincy, where there were a number of very deteriorated homes in the center of that block, and we were able to pick up five of those over the past five years or so and gradually make a big change in that neighborhood. So it was really a strategic opportunity. And over the past two years, we've done, we've undertaken 32 projects with these funds.
So more money would be helpful?
Yes.
When you sell a home, does that money go back into the program?
Well, effectively, we borrow the money from GE, and then we use it during the course of the project for acquisition and construction, and then, of course, we pay it back. So if there are excess proceeds beyond that, of course, they go back into the program.
Just a follow-up from last weekend today with this. What percentage of those 32 projects are now sold?
Let's see. The notes in the agenda item that we prepared show that we have 19 completed renovation projects that have been sold to homeowners. There are seven more that are underway, and of those seven, I can say that since we wrote this, there are... the first one, 662 24th Street is sold, 916 28th Street is sold. So at least two more have sold within the past week, few weeks. And then we've undertaken six new construction projects, and all of those have sold.
Great. That's very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Vice Chair Garner, I just moved that we adopt the proposed Resolution 2013-9.
I second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Van Hoosier and a second from Councilmember Stevens to adopt Resolution 2013-9. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Acting Chair Garner?
Aye. This passes. Thank you. And next is Item 7B, demolition by neglect. And Mr. Montgomery?
Members of the council, the Landmarks Commission has been working as well as the council for a while on this proposed ordinance, and what I'm reporting to you tonight is based on the Landmarks Commission's recommendation to you for your consideration. And this is regarding creation of an ordinance for demolition by neglect is what we like to refer it as. And I just want to talk a little bit about why this came into being. One of the assets of Ogden, of course, is its historic resources, and throughout the time, at least while I've been with the city, there's always been a push to preserve those historic resources. And, you know, Egyptian is one example. But they add a very important part to our community, just like the arts, as you heard earlier, are an important part to the community, so is the preservation of our important historic resources that tell us who we are and how we have come about as a community. Presently, we have two registers, the local register and the national register. On the local register, there are 343 properties. On the national register, there's 413 properties. So some of the items that are on the local register are also on the national, but not all the things on the national are on the local, as you can see by these numbers. The reason this is important is, we talk about this ordinance tonight, this ordinance is dealing with those items that are on the local register. And I know there's... will be a question answered a little bit later, but I just want to explain that the ordinance we're talking about deals with that because of... well, I'll go ahead and explain it now, might as well not wait. Americans, correct me if I make some errors here. The national register really is kind of a honorary title without any real enforcement other than incentives to be on the national register. And so with that title and how the federal government looks at national register properties, anything that puts limitations on it that is not done because of the local register, they feel it's contrary to the national register designation. So as we talk about demolition by neglect in terms of some very specific things, it is applying only to those items on the local register, even though they also may be on the national. If they're on the local, they fall under this category. In some very technical terms, all the properties fall under this discussion, though, of demolition by neglect because of other ordinances we have in the city. So first of all, what is demolition by neglect? It's basically the idea that you allow a building to just fall into disrepair and to become to such a point that because of this disrepair, its structure becomes unsafe. And because of that structural problem, then oftentimes they're ordered to be demolished because there is no way to rehab the building. It's gone so far in its demolition by nature that it can't be rebuilt. Why is that a concern? Well, in the last 20 years, we've lost several buildings that have been on the local register due to this process of the owners not doing anything with the building, just allowing it to rot, and then getting to a point where it has to be taken down. So that's why this concern has surfaced. Why do these things happen? Well, there's several reasons why a building gets into this state. Sometimes it's just the idea of delayed maintenance. You figure, well, I can just do this later. And, you know, you may have experienced this with your own home. There's a project, oh, you know, I'll do it a little bit later, I'll get to it. And then when you get to it later, it becomes a bigger project, and then it requires more funds, and then so, well, I'll save up, and well, by the time you save up, another thing has come to it. And so by delaying that maintenance, it becomes to a point that it's too expensive to try to fix it. Sometimes there's just lack of funds to take care of the property properly. Sometimes speculation enters in, and people look at the property being more valuable than the building, and their hope is that if I can get the building torn down, then I've got a value because the property is more important than the building. And it's also the idea of sometimes you just follow the path of least resistance. If I don't do anything, that's easier than trying to do something and being active in what I own and what I have. But those are situations that happen for different reasons of why buildings get into this situation. What we're talking about tonight is being proactive. These two pictures kind of get an example of when you've got to a point where you feel something so important, but you haven't taken care of it, you go to some very expensive means to then keep what you feel is the important part of that resource. The picture on your left is, you know, a four-story building that's pretty long on a corner. There's no building behind it, but the front they've preserved because they realized that was an important part of their community. But that became a very expensive action to take. The other picture on your right is that you still keep the storefront, then build something behind it, because, again, what happened on the street was so important that that was still required to be preserved. But those are real expensive ways to approach it, and so being proactive in maintenance is a lot less expensive to preserve a historic resource. Now, as I mentioned, the concept is not new in terms of, we already have on the books that property owners are required to maintain their property. This is found in the International Building Code, which is adopted statewide and that the building officials are required to administer. And so the idea of maintaining a building is not anything that's new, and it's also an existing regulations out there. But what this does, it allows for a process to pay special attention to historic buildings, and it also, by this regulation, then prohibits the property, once it gets into a situation of demolition by neglect, from then applying for a demolition permit, which generally is why people let a building go to that point. It says, you've allowed it to get so far now, it's time to repair. You can't just opt out and say, well, I got to tear it down now, which is what the desire may have been. But it actually puts into the ordinance that if it's a historic building on the local register, once the demolition by neglect is in process, you can't apply for a certificate to demolish the building. You've got to work to repair the building. So again, it becomes an incentive to say, I ought to be fixing the building up that I have when it's least expensive to do it, to maintain it, rather than let it get to a point of deterioration. The process, then, that the ordinance outlines, and this is all by creation of a new provision in the Landmarks Ordinance, which is 17-5, outlines what takes place. The Landmarks Commission or the building official can instigate an investigation of a specific building. So the Landmarks Commission is now given the authority to request the building official to make that investigation. The building official will then do a review of it, and so there's a formal process that takes place and documentation that takes place that now this building is under investigation for demolition by neglect. Then the building official is required then to respond back to the commission of their findings. Now, the building official can also instigate this on his own, so it's not limited to the Landmarks Commission directing that to occur, but it allows both options to take place. In the process, then, if the building is found that there is demolition by neglect, the building official tries to resolve the issue with the owner, and this is typical of what he does with any building when he finds that it's in disrepair. If there is no resolution, then a notice and order to repair is given. Still, no action is taken, a certificate is then filed that the building is being considered for demolition by neglect, and then that is recorded at the property so that any future owner may know that that's the situation this building is in, that there's responsibility that's been going on, and you're buying into that responsibility if you acquire this property. Still, by doing this, it does not eliminate the need to still repair the building, it just says that putting people on notice, it has been found to be this way, there's a responsibility there, and if anyone buys a property, they're also aware they're buying that responsibility if it gets to this process.
Is there a time element by which they need to adhere to those repairs?
That is something the building official first tries to work out with that property owner, to set some reasonable timeframes. And the last two that I mentioned to you are if there's no response to that, if it's ignored and nothing taking place, then those things are recorded, because then it either gets into a situation where the Landmarks Commission, as they become aware of what's going on, can ask the city attorney to do a... file an injunction on the property, or we could look at some other way to acquire... to do work to try to stabilize the building.
There's no real time, say 30 or 60 or 90 days?
It all depends on what is needed to make that building happen, and so that's left to the building official to make that judgment. And it's important that we really don't put a timeframe in there, because each repair might require some different type of timeframe to do it. And the building official has that responsibility and his charge to make that determination of the reasonable timeframe, and so the Landmarks Commission really can't say, you've got to do it within this timeframe, because he's got other factors he's got to consider in doing that. So that's why we don't have a specific time.
Is there a period when they need to start on the project, or is that still up to the...
That's still to the building official determine. How bad is the neglect? Is it a simple item that can be corrected easily, or is it very complicated and will take time to line up certain things? For example, it's much different if, you know, maybe it's a small hole in the roof that's... you can see it's causing some failure on the roof member versus if it's a common wall that there's two property owners that's sharing it, and how are you going to resolve that situation? So there are different timeframes that would be involved in that.
While you're at this point, is there a process by which a property owner could petition to have his property taken off of the historic registry?
There is. It's the same process that you put it on. You've got to demonstrate that the building you own does not have any historic significance to the community in terms of its architectural style, its history. Those are all the same things that put it on the register. So to take it off, the city council would have to find that it doesn't meet those criteria But that is the process.
One of the other things you mentioned that might be one of the reasons that this happens is undue financial stress or burden. The Landmarks also looks at this, correct?
Correct. In fact, I'll get to that in just a moment about that process, if that is a real situation.
Okay.
But that's a real good point, because a lot of times, that's what happens.
Right.
Any other questions before I move on? Is that... okay. So then, as I mentioned, the Landmarks Commission could ask that there be an injunctive relief and civil penalties. It's really hard to compel the person to do repair work and get into the violations of citations if nothing is being maintained. Again, these are all things that are under the present building maintenance code, but are being then given special attention to these historic resources, again, because of their importance to the general community. And hopefully, that type of thing, it helps people realize it's better to try to repair something when you first notice it than let it get to such a point that it becomes a real problem.
If the property owner says, you're picking on me because of the regulations that you have, sure, that comes up.
Oh, that comes up, and even a building being on the register, because the person who put it on the register may not be the present owner. And they say, well, why are you picking on me? Well, your building's on the register. And that's when you bought it, that you bought into this system because of that designation.
That's where the reasonable amount of time comes in.
Of what would it take to do, given your situation and given the condition of the building? You know, some things may become such a hazard that it's important to get it fixed now because it becomes a public safety concern. Other things may be minor, say, okay, what's the reasonable timeframe that you can accomplish What the property owner's process in this is that they first are meet with the building official once they get a notice to try to work out a plan of repair. So again, explain the situations, what can I do, what needs to be fixed to make it secure. If the person feels that the building official is just not being reasonable, that he feels like this really isn't a demolition by neglect, he can appeal that to the Board of Building Fire Code officials. That is a group that is organized by the city. They're lay individuals, but they have construction trade background. So they know the construction business, and they're able to make that determination when they're just talking about, well, is this really demolition by neglect? What are the signs that you're seeing? So a person can appeal to that board and say, yes or no. So a person can appeal to that board and say, yes or no, there is no demolition by neglect, that this building doesn't fit into that category, or yes, it does. Another appeal that can be made is the one which Congressman Garner mentioned about the economic situation. So an appeal can be made to the Landmarks Commission about there's economic hardship, that this requirement is giving me an undue burden, economic burden. And so the Landmarks has a process in this proposed ordinance that will then outline how a person can make that appeal and what the commission looks at to determine, is there an undue economic hardship? That provision is important because if there is found there's undue economic hardship, it also allows then the city to say, okay, what are some options out there that we can do to help this property because it's an important resource to the community? Are there grants that we could try to acquire? You know, and I'll jump back to the Egyptian, back when it was threatened with demolition, how different foundations first organized to try to preserve it, and you know, the title was acquired, and then their process of trying to get additional funding and how that all went. And some of you are very familiar with the process that took place for that. It didn't happen overnight, but it set in motion a way that the community could get involved to save a resource. This also says that can happen if there's undue economic hardship. We can look at several options. Maybe it's a zone change that will allow a better use to the property, because it's historic, allow some other uses to take place that the zone may not allow. Maybe it's looking at grants that may be out there, or loans, or types of things that could take place in trying to restore that resource. Even if there's no economic hardship, again, the owner can still try to work with the building official to look at options. Can I mothball the building? In other words, maybe I'm not going to do a full repair, but I'm going to keep it stabilized so it's not going to get any further until there's a viable use to it. Those type of things can be looked at under this provision that allow the fact that you've got the owner, can you meet his needs, and at the same time, still preserve that historic resource.
At that point, does there become a certificate on the property at the county?
There would still be, in terms of situations that still need to be repaired, if the building official says, okay, we can stabilize the building by doing these things, but you still need other repair work, but that'll be delayed until such time, and that'll still be noticed on the property.
That would be noticed?
Yeah.
Okay.
So again, you don't enter ...
So you wouldn't find yourself buying a property that had that circumstance?
And get surprised. Yeah. And that's our concern, is we don't want any future buyer to realize, we want them to know, what did you buy into?
Right.
Yeah.
The mothballing process is one that they use in Park City, and it had to do with the downturn, economic downturn. People bought properties, wanted to restore them, and then the economic downturn was such that they couldn't either find the financing or they lost the financing. And so they started a mothballing process, which enables them to stabilize the building and keep it for an indefinite period of time, I guess, until it's either somebody comes forward to buy it, or it changes, or however that happens.
But it gets to a point that the building is not deteriorating any further from where it is, and it's still going to be a safe structure.
I think the important thing is that these buildings that we're talking about, that we're trying to preserve, adds quality to our community. Even though the repairs may come down the road later on, but at least they will add a little bit of quality to it. The Egyptian theaters is one example of that aspect there.
And I think that's the reason, again, why we're looking at this. Because you can say, well, you already have all these ordinances on the books, as far as building maintenance and repair, though they already exist. But this is adding that special attention to these historic resources that are important to the community. And adding that extra layer of saying, yes, there is something unique about your building other than, from the other buildings. And while every other building is supposed to be maintained, yours hasn't added value to the community.
You know, if you bought a building and it's next to two buildings that have been refurbished, or you know, have been recognized as being historic, and then you let them on the middle just fall down just from simple neglect, that can ruin a whole block. And we've seen that happen on 25th Street on several occasions.
So that's the basis of the demolition by neglect ordinance that's being proposed tonight. There are some other changes that are taking place, such as definitions that help define then these processes. So then the definition section, there's some words added. There's also, as I mentioned, added power to the Landmarks Commission to initiate this. And then this process is completely outlined in that proposed ordinance.
Do the ordinance cover any penalties aspect of it?
The penalties are the existing penalties that we have in the International Building Code as far as notice and orders and work and violations that way. So those don't change. Other questions of me?
I have a concern that's concerning historic properties on the registry that are perhaps in an outlying area, outside of a district, outside of a commercial area, outside of, that are just standalone, out in the middle of, out of context, you know, properties that perhaps because of its location diminishes its historic relevance. And this would apply to those equally, and I don't know, it seems a little heavy-handed for some of those kind of things. How would you address that?
How would I address that? Well, if it's on the register, it's on there for a reason, because it does have historic significance to the community. And so even though development around it has changed, the building individually has importance, and that's why it's there to be preserved. You know, Ogden High, I'll pull that out as an example, is out of context or anything else around it.
Well, that's ...
But it is an individual building that has enough historic significance to it in terms of its architecture that it's important to preserve. Well, you have individual buildings that may be like that, for example, on 17th Street, the cross, one of the crosshomes. Its Victorian design is really unique in that area. And even though other homes were built around it later in time period, it still is an emblem of what was taking place in this neighborhood, and has the unique features that are saying, yeah, this was not just located to one neighborhood. There's a, someone else took time and care for their home and built this style, and their significance to the community and what they did, all those things add to it. Or the D home on 8th and Washington. Again, kind of Washington Boulevard, Commercial Street, not really associated, but yet that home in itself of the residents and that type of, why did they locate there? Why did they do the things they did? Again, those are things that help, keeping those preserved tells stories about how our community developed. So that's how I'd look at those isolated individual properties.
I mean, I'm sure that there's a lot of differences of opinion on that kind of thing. But I wanted to know what yours was.
Yeah.
There's an example of that.
I think on your map, there's, I think I counted 10 pieces of property that are outside of it.
Kind of outside the central area, yeah.
Yeah.
The one on 12th Street where we lost that home was outside the area, and the neighborhood has built up around it, but it is not conforming to the way that house was built, so.
But that's probably the original farmhouse for the, you know.
That was, the outlying area, yeah.
You know, you look at the Fars Orchards and things like that, that all that's changed, and people are ...
Well, and I know we'll be having at some point this year, probably, a request for maybe a couple of properties out on West 2nd Street that are part of Bingham Ford. Again, they're not in the typical run of, where would I find historic resources, but they tell a story in and of themselves at that location of another part of Ogden's development with the different Ford systems.
This is nothing new. When I was back in New York, they had all kinds of scaffolding all throughout the city, preserving some of their buildings that are there in New York City, even the cathedral that they ... There was miles and miles of scaffolding that was put up on the buildings there, so.
And you know, we don't have a huge resource left in Ogden. That's the thing that, to me, that I think is very important. We have our 25th Street, and we have our Jefferson neighborhoods, and we have, but they're still really important that you preserve that history so people know where we came from and where we're going. And you can tell right now by 25th Street what a huge economic boon that has been for the city. And that's taken how many years, Greg? 25 years?
Thirty, yeah.
I mean, probably 30, yeah. So it's not an easy process, but it's one that certainly is worth preserving because just imagine if that were all torn down and you had new buildings, does anybody really want to come? I mean, because part of that has to do with the structures and the way they look and the time period they were in, and it's our history.
And a lot of those buildings are getting to the age where they need some help, or they will be gone.
Yeah.
We have to have a program in place where we can help not only the building, but also the property owners work through their problems. I think this is an essential aspect of that.
That was one of my points, and you know, I am glad that there are opportunities for economic help for some of these.
And those would be the considerations that have to be looked at, and, yeah.
Maura?
Members of the council, I just wanted to respond to a few written comments that the council received on the proposed ordinance before we move forward. And one of the responses is from Bonnie Galbraith. She's here today, so she may actually have her own comments to make, but I did want to respond. She has had a question about why, once the Landmarks Commission requests the building official to investigate a property, why the ordinance allows the building official to have a reasonable time to respond, and why there isn't a timeframe there? And the reason for that is that the Landmarks Commission is an arm of the administration. And that reasonable time language, if you wanted to look at it, it's found on page seven, section 175B. But the Landmarks Commission, being an arm of the administration, really can't dictate to the building official how much time to respond, but the building official needs to retain discretion in that matter. So that language has been in all versions of this draft from the very beginning, so I just wanted to point that out. We also had a response from Kirk Huffaker, and he is the executive director of the Utah Heritage Foundation. And he had generally positive comments and urges the council to take action. He did comment that the ordinance allows for a notice to repair to be just sent via U.S. mail. And he questioned why that wasn't by registered or certified mail. And the reason is, is because we're sticking to the process that we use for all code violation notices, and those are sent to the property owner of record with the county and are just mailed, first-class mail. So we just stuck to the regular process there and feel that that's been adequate for the city. The final written comment we received was from the State Historic Preservation Office. And they have seen several other cities, in particular Salt Lake City, attempt to adopt demolition by neglect ordinances. And one of their concerns has been that local governments, local Landmarks Commissions just deal with properties that are on the local register. So as we've spoken in past work sessions, there's one provision, 1752, on page six, that's the maintenance requirement that legal and the property, the planning department have, feel that the maintenance requirement is something that's not new. It's from the existing International Property Maintenance Code. It's found in existing ordinances. And so we did originally include properties located within a national historic district and say that they are subject to the routine maintenance provisions that are already in code. But the State Historic Preservation Office has urged us to remove the word "national" from the ordinance and feels like that that would be a violation of the spirit of the national historic districts, which do not impose any sticks on property owners, but it's really just an incentive to have your property on the historic, the national historic register. So we would agree with the state office, and we urge you to adopt the ordinance tonight, but we would recommend in, on page six, in two places, that the word "national" be removed, and that's in 1751 and 1752A. And that just leaves the word "historic district," which is a defined term in the ordinance and just refers to a local historic district that has been specifically designated through the process and adopted by the city council. So with those two changes, again, just to remove the word "national" in those two places, we would recommend that you adopt the ordinance tonight.
Okay, thank you. And now on this, we will now receive public input. So come up to the mic, and we're talking about public input about this specific topic.
I own a home in the Eccles District, and I came up here from Texas a few years ago. And down there, most of the new neighborhoods have homeowners' associations, and these have become just a bludgeoning tool for people to use against each other and making a lot of attorneys rich. I'm just wondering if this has a, is this only when the structure's about to collapse, or is this if you don't like the awnings or the trim? Or how do you protect us from abusing our neighbors with this sort of a thing?
We'll get a response from you. After we get all the questions, we'll try to respond to as many as we can. Oh, and sorry, Thane, before you come up, the gentleman that was just here, can we get your name and address just for the record?
I'm Kyle Saunders, living at 2560 Jackson Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders.
Yep, thank you.
My name is Thane Fisher, and I have residence 2500 Tyler Avenue, and also have several historic buildings in the downtown core. And I have gone through the ordinance many times. I just have some questions. I mean, one of the biggest questions I have is the baseline that's been determined. You know, I think everybody knows here, we do own the Star Noodle Building and buildings north and, actually, east and west of it. And after purchasing the buildings, we went in with engineering and determined quality of the brick, structural quality, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it did not come back positive. So I guess the question I have is how do you, who's going to determine that baseline? If it's already at a point of demolition, who determines that? And who's going to pay to determine that? Now, we have already gone in and done all the engineering, tens of thousands of dollars to get the results that we were looking. And we, to be honest, we want to restore that building, but there is a significant cost in doing so. Obviously, economics and when we bought it, when we have it now, have changed. We're hoping that things will come back and it'll be economic-driven. But really, who determines the balance? Because at the end of the day, the age of the brick's the age of the bricks. You can't stop a brick from deteriorating. It's going to deteriorate over time, and the softness of the brick has been determined by pressure tests that we've done with engineering. So I guess that's a question I'd like to have answered. I think the ordinance has great intent. My experience has been when government gets involved with private property rights, it gets challenging. I can speak for, you know, there was several times that we thought we would have the opportunity to move forward with economic changes. There's also what happens when you have members within a building ownership that just do not agree, or even more so, determine a lawsuit within the membership? How does that get resolved? How does that, you know, how do you deal with that? The ordinance that I think if it would be drafted more, not as subjective and more as incentive-based, or, you know, how do we work with owners to have this happen versus how do we police owners? It's just very concerning. I think it can be, I like the idea, I mean, we moved up here, we love 25th Street, we invested in 25th Street. We've spent millions of dollars already repairing. We've done the Soul and Bones Building, which was, you know, almost $2 million with the renovations. I've done homes up on 25th Street that we put in, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to renovate. So we are incentivized, we want to be and do these buildings, but there also is huge economic factors involved. And the biggest thing is, what's the baseline? Because right now, it's very subjective. So I'd like to know what the baseline is for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thane?
Good evening. I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself. My name's Richard Getz, and I just moved here from Boston. And I own 2520 South, 140 East, which is one of the townhomes just on the south side of the last block of 25th between Wall and Lincoln. And I came here seven years ago, fell in love with 25th Street. I want to thank you for, and all the developers like you that put your time and very valuable energies and assets behind that. And I guess what's the point of me getting up here, just to say that it works in terms of attracting people who might not ordinarily make Ogden a second home, which was what I originally did, and now I'm here full-time. But 25th Street is just fantastic, and it's the historical character of it that really drew me to the area. And I'm, well, I definitely understand the concerns from a developer's standpoint, and it really is in the details, but as far as just an ordinary citizen, I think it's great. And it's my favorite part of Ogden, and thank you all for making it happen and doing what you did to get me to move here or buy the place seven years ago. Thank you.
My name is Connie Cox, and I live at 2532 Echols Avenue in the Historic District. And I was a member of the Landmarks Commission for 22 years also. And I've lived in the Echols District for 35 years, and we've lived through thick and thin. And I feel like the Landmarks Ordinance has saved that neighborhood and has made it more appealing for new people to come to the neighborhood. And I feel like this demolition by neglect ordinance just strengthens the ordinance and protects what we already have, and we just don't want to lose anything more. Thank you.
Hello, Sean Clegg. I'm a local business owner, Schofield &amp; Shaw on 25th Street, and just wanted to offer my support of this ordinance. I think it's imperative that we continue to strengthen our community and the buildings around us and protect and make sure that these, these historic buildings are not destroyed by the neglect of the current owners. I think that the further development of Ogden City in general depends on these historic structures. It's what's going to bring businesses to Ogden. I think it's an attractive point for, for individuals and business owners to want to come to Ogden City. That's the reason why Schofield &amp; Shaw is on 25th Street, because of the great history of that street, and we wanted to be a part of that community. Been involved with a group of individuals who have restored historic buildings around Ogden, the Proud Fit Building. That building, you know, was not attractive, and it had many problems with it, but I think now, after that renovation, it's a beautiful building, and it's taken it back to the historic nature that it once was. And I think that can happen with all of these buildings. I think there's individuals around the community that are invested in Ogden City and want to see these historic structures preserved. I hate to, you know, bring up the point of maybe, as it says up there, acquiring the property and then restoring it, but I think there comes a point where that might be necessary. And I think there's a lot of opportunities, you know, whether it be public funding or maybe investors around the community to make that happen and to make it possible for these structures to be preserved. And I just want to leave these comments, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And Mr. Montgomery or Mara, do you want to?
See, I can respond to a couple of questions. Regarding the gentleman in the Echols District, I think a couple of key things about this is that this is not an ordinance that's initiated by citizen complaint. It's the Landmarks making requests as they look at situations and say, you know, from the parents, we see some things, or the building official on his own saying, you know, the building's to such a state that I can see visual things that are making this building structurally unsafe. So things like, you know, not, not a few shingles missing or things like that, but where there's, there appears to be water damage taking place on the, on the building now, where you can see things start to rot off, or where something is unsafe because now the building is open and accessible, and there's no things to stop the elements from getting inside the building. Not painting something, not fixing a shingle that's missing, those are not things that would get to this point. Because as he looks at the building code, it's got to be something that, and as you look at the ordinance itself, where it makes that definition, in fact, maybe I just turn to that. I don't know which number that is on your page, but it's in the definition section. But it talks about the structurally sound and reasonably watertight, or that the character-defining features are being protected, that are integral to the material of the building. And then it talks about significant parts of the facade or roof, or those important features. So I guess in the response to that, to try to avoid neighborhood complaining against neighborhood of how are you taking care of your building, it gets to a point of where it's more of a structural situation that if this continues on, the building's going to be damaged. And that, again, it's initiated by either the Landmarks Commission or the building official making the investigation. So the Landmarks makes the request, or the building official begins his own investigation on it because of something he's observed.
Mr. Montgomery, could you review again the appealing process that this ordinance has within itself?
Excuse me, Dave.
If I, as an owner...
Appeal process.
Appeal process, okay. So if, if the building official does his investigation and then finds that there is demolition by neglect, then he tries to get the owner to work on a situation of how can we repair this? If the owner says, I don't feel that there's a demolition by neglect, he can then appeal to the Build, the Building and Fire Code Group, and can make, and they make the determination of whether or not they feel there is a demolition by neglect occurring. So that's how they could appeal that building official's decision that there is demolition by neglect.
Is there another step after that if he disagrees with that?
If he disagrees with what the Board of Building and Fire Appeals does, that can then go to district court.
Okay.
The other part with the landmarks is more economic, undue economic hardship part. So there's two different views, but for what you're talking about, that initial, is there demolition by neglect? This is the Building and Fire Code Appeals?
Thank you.
The second question, who determines the status of demolition by neglect and what does they use? Again, the building official is the one that would determine that based on his expertise of the building codes and the analysis that he looks at in terms of structural integrity. Again, if he makes that determination there is and has a meeting with the builder, the owner of the property, if the owner of the property has additional information, he'll take that into consideration in looking at it. But it's nothing that's being required that you have to hire somebody, and the city's now forcing to hire to defend it unless you feel you want to do that. But they'll look at those general structural integrity items and determine what is the status, what work is being done to try to maintain the property from the elements, to keep it tight, to keep it weatherproof, to look at those type of things.
Mr. Montgomery, in this situation, it was brought up, you know, like brick testing and stuff, and they've paid for their own analysis.
Right.
Would the city just use that information, and the owner just says, I've already done that, here's the information?
Yeah, they'll take a look at that if, if the building official's made that, and he says, I want to have you look at this stuff I've already done, and he could look at that. That could be additional information used for, is there undue economic burden that could already supply that information?
And if the building official wanted something else done, who pays for that testing?
Generally, if he's looking at that, from my understanding, a lot of times, he may ask for an independent third party that's on contract with the city.
Okay. And then the city pays for that?
At that point, yeah, on contract.
I think that's what one of the questions was, so I just wanted to get that answered.
I think the reason we didn't set any time limits on that, which we could very easily, is because each situation is different.
Going to be different.
That aspect there.
One other question, and this we may not be able to answer. This one is, multiple owners of the same property, how do you?
That's going to be their own internal fighting it out, working it out. They are the owner of the property, and however they work it out amongst themselves is up to them. That's, we don't get involved in that part of it.
And if it goes into a lawsuit, then that can take many years, but they would have to mothball the, the building to secure the elements.
Yeah, they're still the responsible party, no matter how they agree or disagree among themselves. They collectively are still the responsible party and still have to try to act towards meeting the requirement.
But they still have to protect the building.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's their obligation now.
Yeah, you still have to...
You still have to maintain your building.
Keep the weeds down and maintain the building and all, I mean, it would be...
Give it secured and all those type of things. Those all apply now even without this.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir. Okay, further discussion from council members.
I'd like to thank Councilwoman Van Hooser for her work on this ordinance. I, I thought she spent a considerable amount of time trying to produce something that is worthwhile for our community.
There's been, there's been years spent on this. It's not a matter of just something that happened overnight, because we worked really hard to talk to other communities and find out what kind of demolition by neglect ordinances do they have? Would they, would they work for Ogden, will they not? And this is not a punitive, in any way to any developer or, or business, you know? We really just want to protect what is Ogden's and what's Ogden's heritage. So we've worked really hard to make sure that there are going to be options, and the options can be looked at by a number of people that have the knowledge to figure it out. And I think sometimes when you buy a building and you're not sure what you have, you have to, you have to bring everybody on board to figure out what to do to make it right. Having said that, may I make the motion? Are we at that point?
We are.
I'd like to make, that we adopt the demolition by neglect proposed ordinance 2013-17, also removing on page six where two times where it says, and we do historic district and not national.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Van Hooser and a second from Councilmember Wicks to adopt ordinance seventeen, or 2013-17 with the amended changes. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hooser?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Acting Chair Gardner?
Aye. This passes.
Can I just make a brief statement if it's okay?
Sure.
When you talk about working on something like this, I think it's important that, that we understand that this process involved a lot of people in this community. It wasn't just the council's decision to do this. And that I, you know, our city council staff, our city council have been very diligent in making sure that this ordinance has a priority, and that, you know, it's been discussed literally for years. I think we need to thank our commissioners on the Landmarks Commission, on the Planning Commission, past and present, because this has been going on for as long as I can remember, and I served on the Landmarks Commission for almost 16 years. I think a special thanks to Greg Montgomery and to Mara and the city staff for helping us get this together and produce something we can really work with here in Ogden. And again, to the city council for laboring with us through this whole thing, because I think it's something that's going to be worthwhile, and we'll certainly see the advantages of it. And thanks a lot.
First Chair, may I? I have some degree of anxiety about this ordinance, that it, that it not be, create a hot potato situation for, for property owners that just find themselves with, with this issue sometime. I think it behooves us as, in the implementation, that we make sure that, that notices are placed on, on property records at the county as quickly as we can to make sure that somebody doesn't just find themselves with this, with this issue. I am grateful for all the work that's been done, too. It, it's what made, made me confident enough to vote yes on this, is because I think that a lot of things have been thought through, and the implementation is probably as good as it gets. But we've just got to be, we've just got to be diligent as a, as a city to make sure that this doesn't become a, a problem for an unsuspecting property owner, and that we don't just use it as a stick to beat someone up. I think we are treading close to the issues that, one of the comments was, government infringing, you know, on private property rights. We're getting there. We're getting to where it's, where it's getting close to where it would be a problem for me to vote for it.
And I think it gives us another tool by which we can preserve those, that history and that heritage that we have, and, and it gives us a barometer by which we can look at several structures and determine the mechanism by which needs to be repaired or demolished at that particular time. And I think it's a helpful tool for us to go ahead. I, I hope we don't use it in what Councilman Hire has indicated, but I hope we use it as an effective tool to preserve our history in our community.
Yeah, I probably ought to mention that, that our historic districts are absolutely a jewel. You know, Jefferson Historic District, Echols, our 25th Street, our CBD, those, those old buildings that do create a fabric are what make Ogden what it is and, and very attractive, very unique. We've got some, our CBD is the neatest in the state, I think, because of the way it's built. And it does need to be protected. And I'm sorry for the ones that are missing that should be there, so.
Thank you. And thank you for all your hard work, and thank you for the citizens who's given us their comments today. We truly appreciate that. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public hearings, and this is the fees associated by the demolition by neglect, and...
Mr. Montgomery will present this also.
And council members, one of the things that came up as we looked at this was, with the different processes being proposed, should there be fees associated with it? And for example, we're talking about three different processes. One is the, the appeal to the Building and Fire Code. Presently, that board exists, and they have a fee of $100. And this is to reaffirm that that same fee would apply for that appeal based on, on the appeal of this decision as any other decision they have to look at. So that's the normal processing fee, and so the proposed ordinance would, would take a look at that. The other two are new fees that we're looking at. One would be an appeal to the Landmarks Commission on Economic Hardship. And the reason we're looking at, at fees on these two is because these, the economic hardship and the demolition certificate are that they are things that are, if you will, contrary to what we have done in historic preservation. We're always trying to preserve buildings, and these two processes of applying for a certificate of demolition is not trying to preserve a building, and where we've made it a stance before that those who go to the Landmarks Commission should not have to pay any application fee, even though there is time involved in it, is based on the idea that these are all things trying to preserve historic resource. If a request is being made to demolish a historic resource, that ought to have an application fee to it. For example, I'll use the Stout Home on 12th Street. It probably went through four different applications for demolition. Each time, they were denied. And so the, the result was, well, just let it sit and rot, because each time they applied for it is denied, and it took a lot of time, a lot of process, a lot of things took, took place, and certificate was denied, but it still took staff time to go through that. So we looked at what other cities charge. We looked at Salt Lake and Park City, of do they have a fee for the board, the commission... We looked at Salt Lake and Park City, of do they have a fee for the board, the commission looking at demolition certificates, and they do. Salt Lake has a fee of $221. Park City has a fee of $500. So we took a look at that and says, okay, what would our estimated cost be? So we went and looked at what are some of the processes we've gone through before, and how long did it take us to go through that process? And we, looking at times of the board meeting, of documents reviewed, and those type of things, came up with a cost of $378 in our staff time reviewing that. And that is what the proposed ordinance is saying, is that we ought to just reflect the staff time taken to review that demolition. So the proposed ordinance is that there be a $378 fee if someone's applying for a demolition certificate of historic property. If someone is making an economic appeal, and we again looked at Park City and Salt Lake, what they charge, we looked at our staff time and looked at, basically taking about $336 in time and effort to do that process. We therefore have looked at adding that fee, 336, if an appeal is made on the economic hardship issue. Again, feeling that those three processes should have a fee established with them if those appeals are made to cover the expense, because they're going beyond preserving historic resources. They're looking at trying to find ways to maybe take that historic resource away. And so we felt it would be appropriate to add fees to those three items.
Mr. Montgomery, just on the economic one.
Mm-hmm.
If I read this correctly, Salt Lake City is a little bit less than $336.
It's the $221, yeah.
$221. And Ogden is proposed to be 336. Is there a way for an individual, if they truly say, you know, "I'm really on some tough times," to work with them on this fee, or?
Well, I think, I think part of our hope is that in the discussion with the building official, that if there's a timeframe involved, that they say, "Well, I can do it, but give me this much time," those are things we'd hope would take place beforehand. We see people coming to this one saying, "Well, you know, I don't want to deal with that. I just want some other thing out there. I don't want to try to work with it. I just want to make my appeal." We feel then they ought to be able to pay for that, because what we noticed before is, again, I'll go back to the Stout Home, one of his situations was the economic idea. And the time it took us to do the research and go through all that, and then for it to come to naught, it made us realize that a lot of times that may be an appeal, but there's really no backing behind it, that there really are the resources to do it. And so we felt it would still be appropriate to have a fee associated with it.
The difference is about $115.
Right. That's why I was looking at it.
Again, that's your call, because a lot of the times, what I, again, looked at is my estimate of what it takes staff to do all this. A lot of other fees we have, we know what the staff time is, but we still discount it. So I mean, that's your decision of what you feel is appropriate.
Okay. I was, you know, just, I was just looking at, I know you base it on staff time, but I was looking at, you know, compared to a large city, and they may have more funds...
They have more staff.
...than staff to look at things, you know, just seemed much higher to me. And I was like, if we could do something for that, just that fee.
And that's something you can certainly take a look and revise.
Sure. Okay. Just establish a different fee, you know? Maybe in between.
Yeah. I think, I think the key thing is, is when you're establishing fees, if you know what the original cost is, and you say, "Okay, we cover our costs, but if we feel it's important for the community," you do a discount and say, you know, "General taxes, general fund are taking care of the other part of it." If you feel like, no, this is a special privilege being that this one individual's asking, then you say, "Well, what is the staff cost? Let's cover the cost." I think the key part is you use that, and you realize, well, I'm not going to go over it, because we're not here to add to the coffers, we're here to cover costs. And so that's why that number becomes that baseline.
Thank you for that information. And this is a public hearing, so we'll now accept public input regarding this fee structure.
Seeing no public coming forward, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Stevens to close the public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And now further discussion on this ordinance.
I think we need to look at the fee to make sure it's realistic in that aspect there.
I think the fee that Mr. Montgomery has stated is realistic as far as cost's goal. It's just, it's kind of like the reduced price school lunch. If you can't afford it, you won't do it.
Right.
And I don't know how you get them to prove that they can't afford it, or I don't know how that's done. I don't know how you could do that.
Could you afford the fee? I mean, could you afford to demolish the building if you can't afford the fee?
Well, that's true. There is that point. Yeah, they're stuck with that.
The reality of it. If you demolish a building, you can afford to pay for a fee.
Right. You know, so I asked that question, and it was more of just, you know, understanding how it was done, and you explained that very well. You know, it's based on the time and information that had to be gathered, so.
I think it seems fair and in line with what's charged in other communities.
Further discussion?
I move that we adopt proposed ordinance 2013-14.
I second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Van Hoosier and a second from Councilmember Stevens. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Acting Chair Garner?
Aye. This passes. Next is public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding your concerns or ideas. Please state your name and address clearly for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. In this form of government, all city personnel are the responsibility of the administration, not of the council. Please discuss any concerns you may have regarding staff with the mayor, chief administrative officer, or department directors.
Okay. Thank you. Comments from administration?
Just two. Weaver State's up by one with six minutes left, and the D Event Center is full, which is a great thing, so. Other than that, no, nothing else.
Okay, council staff.
Thank you.
Council members.
I think Weaver State's basketball team has a great year, and I hope they win.
And we do appreciate the community's support of our great university, so thank you. And again, Councilmember Van Hoosier, thank you for all your hard work on this and being the champion, and we appreciate all your efforts.
Years of work. Years. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is consideration of adjourned into a closed executive session. Mr. Williams?
Chair, a closed executive session is permissible for the purposes set forth in the agenda.
I would move that we adjourn into a closed executive session.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hire and a second from Councilmember Wicks to adjourn into a closed executive session. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Acting Chair Garner?
Aye.
And following the closed executive session, we'll adjourn and go into a city council work session that will follow the council meeting. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the Ogden-Weber Community Action Partnership, or ALCAP, our fiscal 2014 annual action plan, home exterior loan program changes, and the emergency home repair program, and Own in Ogden, and any other council business.